Agenda City Council Regular Meeting Folsom City Hall City Council Chambers, First Floor 50, Natoma Street, Folsom, California, 95630. May 27, 2025, 6:30 PM. Welcome to your city council meeting. We welcome your interest and involvement in the city's legislative process. This agenda includes information about topics coming before the city council and the action recommended by city staff. You can read about each topic in the staff reports, which are available on the city website and in the office of the city clerk. The city clerk is also available to answer any questions you have about city council meeting procedures. Participation if you would like to provide comments to the city council, please fill out a blue speaker request form, located at the back table. Submit the form to the city clerk before the item begins. When it's your turn, the city clerk will call your name and invite you to the podium. Speakers generally have three minutes, unless the presiding officer, usually the mayor, changes that time. Reasonable accommodations in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. If you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at (916) 461-6035, (916) 355-7328, fax, or city clerk department at folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. How to Watch the City of Folsom provides three ways to watch a city council meeting: In person, online, on TV. City council meetings take place at City Hall, 50 Natoma Street. Watch the live stream and replay past meetings on the city website, www.folsom.ca.us. Watch live and replays of meetings on SAC Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. More information about city council meetings is available at the end of this agenda. One City Council Regular Meeting Folsom City Hall City Council Chambers, First Floor 50, Natoma Street, Folsom, California, 95630. Tuesday, May 27, 2025, 6:30 PM. Mike Koslowski, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Sarah Aquino, Mayor Barbara Leary, Councilmember Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember Agenda Call to Order Roll Call. Councilmembers: Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Koslowski, Aquino. The city council has adopted a policy that no new item will begin after 10:30 PM. Therefore, if you are here for an item that has not been heard by 10:30 PM, you may leave, as the item will be continued to a future council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance Agenda Update Business From the Floor. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Folsom City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are generally limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Scheduled Presentations: One Friends of the Folsom Zoo Presentation of a Donation Check to the City of Folsom Zoo Sanctuary. Two Consent Calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Councilmembers may pull an item for discussion. Two Approval of May 13, 2025 Special and Regular Meeting Minutes Three. Resolution Number 11,382. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Amendment Number One to the Agreement, Contract No. 173-2122-069, with Water Fluence, LLC, to meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 1,668 and Senate Bill 606 regarding landscape irrigation for commercial, industrial, and institutional sites serviced by dedicated irrigation meters for. Resolution No. 11383. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with West Yost and Associates, Inc., for $114,627 from the Water Operating Fund, Fund 520, for professional services for the risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan for the city's water system five. Resolution Number 11,384. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., for pre-designed services for $166,233 from the Water Operating Fund, Fund 520, and the Sewer Operating Fund, Fund 530, for the Water and Wastewater Communication Hardware Upgrade Project and Appropriation of Funds Six. Resolution Number 11,388. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Design and Consulting Services Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., from a $1,040,000 federal grant with a local cost share of $134,743 for the Folsom Lake Crossing Safety Improvements Phase Two Project and Appropriation of Funds in the Transportation Improvement Fund, Fund 446, seven. Resolution N. Zero. 11,389. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Design Consulting Services with Leathers and Associates for the Kids Play Park Renovation Project, Project No. PK2501, eight. Resolution Number 11,391. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Amendment Number One to the Agreement, Contract No. 173-2123-009, with Dominich Elliott and Associates, Inc., for design and engineering services during construction for the water system rehabilitation project number three, Project WA2301, for $130,744 from the Water Operating Fund, Fund 520. Public Hearing. Nine Presentation by Staff in Compliance with Assembly Bill 2561/Government Code Section 3,502.3 Regarding City Vacancies. Recruitment and Retention Efforts Ten. Resolution Number 11,387. A Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number 8,792 and Adopting a New Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule with Annual Adjustment Not to Exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI, eleven. Resolution Number 11,390. A Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number 10,697 and Adopting a New Fee Schedule for the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary Three New Business, twelve. Resolution Number 11,377. A Resolution Adopting a List of Projects for Fiscal Year 2025 to '26 to be funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act thirteen. Resolution Number 11,385. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Interagency Agreement for Cost Sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum fourteen. Resolution Number 11,386. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Submit an Application for Funding through the Safe Streets for All Grant Program Administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation fifteen. Resolution No. 11392. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Hire an Arborist to Support Citywide Tree Protection and Planting Services and Authorizing the Appropriation of Funds from the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund, Fund 226. City Manager Reports Council Comments Adjournment Notice. Members of the public are entitled to directly address the city council concerning any item that is described in the notice of this meeting, before or during consideration of that item. If you wish to address council on an issue, which is on this agenda, please complete a blue speaker request card, and deliver it to a staff member at the table on the left side of the council chambers prior to discussion of the item. When your name is called, stand to be recognized by the mayor and then proceed to the podium. If you wish to address the city council on any other item of interest to the public, when the mayor asks if there is any business from the floor, follow the same procedure described above. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Notice Regarding Challenges to Decisions Pursuant to All Applicable Laws and Regulations, including without limitation, California Government Code Section 65,009 and/or California Public Resources Code Section 21,177. If you wish to challenge in court any of the above decisions, regarding planning, zoning and/ or environmental decisions, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, s, described in this notice/agenda, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at, or prior to, the public hearing. As Presiding Officer, the mayor has the authority to preserve order at all city council meetings, to remove or cause the removal of any person from any such meeting for disorderly conduct or for making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, using profanity, or becoming boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing said council, and to enforce the rules of the council. Persons interested in proposing an item for the city council agenda should contact a member of the city council. This meeting of the city council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cablecast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV/Universe Cable System, and will be shown in its entirety on the Friday and Saturday following the meeting, both at 9:00 AM. The recording will also be video streamed at Metro14live.saccanti.gov. The city does not control scheduling of this telecast and persons interested in watching the televised meeting should confirm this schedule with Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. The City of Folsom provides live and archived webcasts of four regular city council meetings. The webcasts can be found on the online services page of the city's website, www.folsom.ca.us. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, if you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at (916) 461-6035, (916) 355-7328, fax, or city clerk department at folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. Any documents produced by the city and distributed to the city council regarding any item on this agenda will be made available at the city clerk's counter at City Hall located at 50 Natoma Street, Folsom, California, and at the Folsom Public Library located at 411 Stafford Street, Folsom, California during normal business hours. Five Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date: May 27, 2025 Agenda Section: Scheduled Presentations Subject: Friends of the Folsom Zoo Presentation of a Donation Check to the City of Folsom Zoo Sanctuary from Parks and Recreation Department Background/Issue The Friends of the Folsom Zoo will provide a brief overview of the donation they are providing to the City of Folsom Zoo Sanctuary. The presentation will be delivered by Peggy Platt, President of the Friends of the Folsom Zoo. Recommendation/City Council Action No action is requested of the city council at this time. Submitted: Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Director, 1 File 034-2125-001. Folsom City Council Minutes May 13, 2025 City Council Special Meeting Minutes Tuesday, May 13, 2025, 5:15 PM. Call to Order The Special City Council Meeting was called to order at 5:15 PM with Mayor Aquino presiding. Roll Call. Councilmembers present: Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers absent: Michael Koslowski. Councilmember Adjournment to Closed Session for the following purposes: One Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. D. One Mark Leclerc v. City of Folsom, Sacramento County Superior Court Case No. 25CV0066532. Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. D. One Richard Brixey v. City of Folsom, Workers' Compensation Appeals Board Case NOS. ADJ 18296163 and ADJ 182961493. Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54,957.6. Agency Negotiator: Vance Pigott. Employee Organization: Various Bargaining Groups Motion by Mayor Aquino, Second by Vice Mayor Rathal to adjourn to closed session. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None Reconvene Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council Page 1 File 034-2125-001. Folsom City Council Minutes May 13, 2025 City Attorney Stephen Wong announced that no final action was taken during closed session. Adjournment There being no further business to come before the city council, the meeting was adjourned at 6:32 PM. Submitted by: attest underscore 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 resolution number 11,372. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with Sturtel Coney USA, Inc., to Purchase Mobile Column Lifts to Raise Heavy Vehicles as Required for Maintenance and Repair Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council Page 2 File 034-2125-001. Folsom City Council Minutes May 13, 2025 13. Resolution Number 11,373. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding with the Sacramento Transportation Authority Regarding Coordination of State Transportation Improvement Program Funding Applications and Communication 14. Resolution Number 11,378. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contracts Not to Exceed $750,000 Total Aggregate Amount for All Consultants, Annually for Building and Fire Plan Check and Inspection Services with 4LEAF, Inc., TRB and Associates, CSG Consultants, BPR Consulting Group, and Bureau Veritas 15. Resolution No. 11380. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Hire a Limited Term Park Planner II to Support Park and Trail Planning and Development in the Folsom Plan Area and Authorizing the Appropriation of Funds Motion by Councilmember Leary, Second by Councilmember Rohrbau to Approve the Consent Calendar. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None Public Hearing, 16. Resolution No. 11371. A Resolution to Amend Resolution Number 11,364 and Adopt an Amended User Fee Schedule for Selected Police Department Services Police Lieutenant Canepa and Government Consulting Partners Senior Manager Jeff Wakefield Gave a Presentation and Responded to Questions from the City Council. Chief Financial Officer Stacy Tomagna Provided Additional Clarification, and City Attorney Stephen Wong Addressed a Question Regarding Cost Recovery. The public hearing was opened and closed at 7:55 PM with no requests to speak. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, Second by Councilmember Rohrbau to Approve Resolution Number 11,371 Eliminating Fee Number Seven and Eight from Exhibit A from the Fee Waiver List. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None New Business, 19. Resolution No. 11376. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Operational Agreement for Use of the Parcel 61 Electronic Reader Board Sign to be Located at the Southwest Corner of East Bidwell Street and Alder Creek Parkway. City Manager Brian Witamier Reported that an applicant has requested additional discussions regarding their item. As a result, the matter will be brought back at a future meeting. Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council Page 3 File 034-2125-001. Folsom City Council Minutes May 13, 2025 17. City of Folsom Community Facilities District No. 20 to 1, Russell Ranch 2. I Resolution No. 11374. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom Appointing Consultants, Approving a Proposed Boundary Map and Declaring Intention to Form a Community Facilities District to be Named City of Folsom Community Facilities District No. 20 to 1, Russell Ranch 2, and to Levy Special Taxes Therein 2. Resolution No. 11375. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom Declaring the Necessity for Incurring Bonded Indebtedness in and for the City of Folsom Community Facilities District No. 20 to 1, Russell Ranch 2, and Calling for a Public Hearing Thereon. Chief Financial Officer Stacy Tomagna Made a Presentation and Responded to Questions from the City Council. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, Second by Councilmember Leary to Approve Resolution Number 11,374. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, Second by Councilmember Leary to Approve Resolution Number 11,375. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None 18. Resolution No. 11381. A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement to Purchase One, Natoma Street, APN 071-0310-014-0000, for Police Department Use. Police Department Commander Lockhart Made a Presentation and Responded to Questions from the City Council. City Manager Brian Witamier Made Further Comments. Motion by Councilmember Leary, Second by Vice Mayor Rathal to Approve Resolution Number Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None 20. Resolution Number 11,370. A Resolution Replacing Resolution Number 6,451 and Establishing City Council Meeting Recesses in July, November, and December Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council Page 4 File 034-2125-001. Folsom City Council Minutes May 13, 2025 City Manager Brian Witamier Spoke About the Recommended Changes to City Council Recesses. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, Second by Councilmember Rohrbau to Approve Resolution Number 11,370. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None 21. Resolution Number 11,379. A Resolution Authorizing the Public Works Department to Implement a Flashing Yellow Arrows Trial Project Zack Bosch, Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department Traffic Division, Gave a Presentation and Responded to Questions from the City Council. Vice Mayor Rathal Suggested Implementing a Six-Month Pilot Program Ahead of the Upcoming Budget Cycle. City Manager Witamier Recommended Targeting a February Timeframe to Align with the Budget Planning Process. Mayor Aquino Requested that One of the Pilot Locations be Situated Near the DMV. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, Second by Councilmember Leary to Approve Resolution Number 11,379. Motion passed by the following Roll Call: Vote: Eyes; Knows; Absent; Abstain. Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Aquino None Koslowski None. City Manager Reports City Manager Brian Witamier Congratulated Public Works Director Mark Rackoven on his Long Standing Service to the City of Folsom and Noted Appreciation for his Accomplishments. He announced the Recruitment for the Next Public Works Director is Underway, Closing June 22nd, with the Water and Environmental Resources Director Marcus Yasutaki Serving as Interim Director during the Transition. He reminded the City Council of the Upcoming Budget Workshop on May 27th at 2:00 PM at the Folsom Public Library. Budget Discussions will continue at the June 10th and June 24th City Council Meetings, noting the option for additional workshops if needed. The City Manager shared his experience attending the Cap-to-Cap program, highlighting valuable meetings with regional partners and discussions on local infrastructure issues, including the Empire Ranch Interchange. He mentioned facility updates, including temporary closure of the Senior and Arts Center, May 19-June 20, for HVAC replacement and limited senior programs will continue, June 2-20, at the Folsom Community Center. Folsom Library Closure on May 20th for Lighting System Upgrades, Reopening May 21st, and upcoming events including Freeskate and BMX Jam May 17th at Cummings Family Park, Community Service Day Planning Meeting on May 14th, Battle of the Badges Blood Drive on June 4th, and the next CERT. Training Academy. He also reported the Folsom Police Department's Motor Team Participation in National Police Week in Washington, DC, Honoring Fallen Officers, Attendance at the Folsom Police Awards Ceremony Recognizing Exemplary Service, and Folsom Fire's Traditional Push-In Ceremony for Ladder Truck 35 on April 26th. Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council Page 5 File 034-2125-001. Folsom City Council Minutes May 13, 2025 Council Comments Vice Mayor Council comments Vice Mayor Rathal shared his appreciation for a recent ride along with Folsom Fire Department Station Thirty-Five, expressing gratitude for the hospitality and insight into daily operations. He acknowledged ongoing challenges in the park shore and farmhouse communities related to homelessness, especially near fish and wildlife property. He thanked the city manager, hot team, Folsom Police, parks, and recreation, and other staff for their responsive efforts in providing relief and solutions. Rathal also commended parks and recreation and community development staff for facilitating recent commission meetings with strong public engagement. He encouraged continued community participation and thanked staff for their professionalism in addressing resident concerns. He concluded by reflecting on the privilege of serving in Folsom, emphasizing the city's unique and special character. Council member Roarbow reflected on the value of attending the cap-to-cap program alongside city manager Brian Witamier, emphasizing the unique opportunity to connect with elected officials and regional leaders to strengthen future partnerships for Folsom. She highlighted productive discussions focused on infrastructure, including meetings with the Federal Transit Administration and a White House Special Assistant, centering on transportation solutions. She and the city manager also met with Congressman Kevin Killey to advocate for the Empire Ranch Interchange Project. Roarbow thanked Public Works Department Engineering Manager Ryan Chance and city staff for their preparation and support, noting that the information provided was instrumental in representing the city's needs. She underscored the importance of continuing progress on the interchange project to alleviate traffic on East Bidwell and affirmed council's shared commitment to this goal. Council member Leary thanked Environmental and Water Resources Director Marcus Yasutaki for stepping in during the city manager's absence and assisting with local construction-related issues involving PG and E and N T. She stressed the importance of contractors providing residents with proper advance notice before work begins. She recognized participants in the recent Public Safety Citizens Academy and noted that several graduates plan to volunteer with police and fire services. She highlighted upcoming educational sessions on the lighting and landscape district ballot measure for Natoma Station, encouraging community participation to help shape future service strategies. She also reported on a recent trip to Washington, D.C., where she and city representatives met with federal officials to discuss regional water infrastructure needs, including conjunctive use and underground water storage projects. The meetings emphasized collaboration with surrounding communities to improve long-term water supply and resilience. Mayor Aquino reported on her participation in the cap-to-cap trip, where she served as honorary vice chair of the air quality team along with District Attorney Tian Ho. She met with Congressman Kevin Killey and Tom McClintock, U.S. Representative Ami Barra, and U.S. Senators Alex Padilla and Adam Schiff to discuss infrastructure, air quality, tariffs, and public safety. She also toured Northern Virginia as part of a SACAC-sponsored visit and shared innovative community planning ideas observed there, including housing above a fire station and a community center adjacent to affordable housing. Mayor Aquino thanked Commander Lockhart and Lieutenant Verhalen for attending a Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting with her to address delays in the jail booking process. She noted Folsom officers are spending up to five hours booking a single suspect, largely due to health screenings. These delays reduce patrol coverage and increase overtime costs. The issue was raised alongside leaders from Elk Grove Police and the Sacramento Police Department. Finally, Mayor Aquino requested a follow-up report on the city ordinance prohibiting alley parking, asking whether it has improved access for emergency and waste services, particularly in the historic district. Draft not official until approved by the city council page six file zero thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero zero one Folsom City Council minutes May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
...sites serviced by dedicated irrigation meters in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars for a new not to exceed amount of two hundred and six thousand seven hundred dollars. Financial impact: The current agreement has been paid for using funds made available in the Water Operating Fund (Fund 520) through FI 2024 to 25. This amendment will begin effective July first, 2025, and will be paid for using funds in the Water Operating Fund (Fund 520), made available through the annual budget process in FI 2025 to 26, FI 2026 to 27, and FI 2027 to 28. Environmental review: This project is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act (Section 15,301) existing facilities. Attachment Resolution No. 11382-A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number One to the Agreement (Contract No. 173 to 2122-069) with Water Fluence LLC to meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 1,668 and Senate Bill 606 regarding landscape irrigation for commercial, industrial, and institutional sites serviced by dedicated irrigation meters submitted. Marcus Yasutaki, Director Environmental and Water Resources Department, Three Attachment One Resolution No. 11,382-A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment No. One to Agreement (Contract No. 173 to 2122-069) with Water Fluence LLC to meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 1,668 and Senate Bill 606 regarding landscape irrigation for commercial, industrial, and institutional sites serviced by dedicated irrigation meters whereas, in 2018 the Legislature of the State of California passed Assembly Bill 1,668 and Senate Bill 606 for water conservation and drought planning, and whereas, in 2024 the state enacted the Making Conservation a Way of Life Regulation. From Assembly Bill 1,668 and Senate Bill 606, and whereas, these legislative measures require measuring the landscape areas and calculating water budgets at all commercial, industrial, and institutional sites serviced by dedicated irrigation meters and mixed-use meters, and whereas, the Environmental and Water Resources Department wishes to continue utilizing the Water Fluence LLC platform to create and monitor water budgets and engage commercial, industrial, and institutional property. Affiliates at a three-year cost of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and whereas, the current agreement has been paid for using funds made available in the Water Operating Fund (Fund 520) through FI 2024 to 25. This amendment will begin effective July first, 2025, and will be paid for using funds in the Water Operating Fund (Fund 520), made available through the annual budget process in FI 2025 to 26, FI 2026 to 27, and FI 2027 to 28, and whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore. BIT resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the city manager to execute Amendment Number One to the Agreement (Contract Number 17,32122-069) with Water Fluence LLC to meet the requirements of Assembly Bill 1,668 and Senate Bill 606 regarding landscape irrigation for commercial, industrial, and institutional sites serviced by dedicated irrigation meters in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars for a new not to exceed amount of two hundred and six thousand seven hundred dollars. Passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May, 2025, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Resolution Number 11,382, page one of two attest.
Construction with a value of seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollar or greater shall be awarded by city council. Analysis on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the city issued a request for proposals for the pre-designed services for the water and wastewater communication hardware upgrade project. On April fourth, twenty twenty-five, EWR received proposals from HDR Engineering, Inc., Black &amp; Veatch, Hydroscience, and Kennedy Jenks. The four proposals were evaluated by four EWR staff members for technical evaluation prior to reviewing project costs. The proposals were reviewed and scored for project understanding, qualifications, deliverables, and project team staffing. The technical evaluations were scored and are shown in Table one. Consultant EWR one Hydroscience fifty-three HDR Engineering, Inc. sixty-six Black &amp; Veatch sixty-four Kennedy Jenks sixty-two Table one. Consultant technical scores without costs EWR two fifty-three fifty-seven sixty-eight seventy EWR three forty-nine fifty-five sixty-four sixty-five EWR four forty-nine seventy-one 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 average fifty-one sixty-two point three sixty-six point eight sixty-seven after reviewing each proposal for project understanding, qualifications, deliverables, and project team staffing, the proposals were reviewed for project costs. The fee schedules for the scope of work outlined in the request for proposals from each consultant are shown in Table two. Consultant Hydroscience: three hundred and seventy-eight hours; HDR Engineering, Incorporated: seven hundred and eighty-six hours; Black &amp; Veatch: one thousand and nine hours; Kennedy Jenks: eight hundred and seventy-seven hours. Table two: consultant project costs and project hours fee amount one hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and two dollars one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars two hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollar HDR Engineering, Inc. was determined to provide the best value to the city based on the scope of work provided in their proposal, the project team, their expertise for these types of projects, the total fee amount and overall cost based on the assumed number of hours. Proposed to complete the three work. HDR Engineering, Inc. included a detailed and thorough project understanding. Table three shows the overall total scores including project costs based on a maximum score of one hundred. Technical consultant score: average; cost score Hydroscience fifty-one twenty point five HDR Engineering, Inc. sixty-two point three twenty-one point nine Black &amp; Veatch sixty-six point eight fifteen point five Kennedy Jenks sixty-seven seventeen point one Table three. Consultant overall scoring including project costs and cost per hour total score seventy-one point five eighty-four point two eighty-two point three eighty-four point one This resolution will authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for pre-designed services for the water and wastewater communication hardware upgrade project for a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and appropriation of funds. Financial impact the Water System Communications Hardware Upgrade Project: Project number WA two-five-zero-two is included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five capital improvement plan with a project budget of one million two hundred thousand dollar in the Water Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-twenty). Sufficient funds are budgeted and available in the project budget to cover the Water System Communications Hardware Upgrade Project's portion of the agreement: ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. The Wastewater System Communications Hardware Upgrade Project is not included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five capital improvement plan and will require an appropriation in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Sufficient funds are budgeted and available in the Sewer Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-thirty) to cover the Wastewater System Communication Hardware Upgrade Project's portion of the agreement: sixty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Attachment Resolution number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-four: A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for pre-designed services for one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars from the Water Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-twenty) and the Sewer Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-thirty) for the Water and Wastewater Communication Hardware Upgrade Project and appropriation of funds. Submitted: Marcus Yasutaki, Director Environmental and Water Resources Department for Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-four A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for pre-designed services for one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars from the Water Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-twenty) and the Sewer Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-thirty) for the Water and Wastewater Communications Hardware Upgrade Project and appropriation of funds whereas, the city's water and wastewater communication hardware systems are at the end of their serviceable life and are in need of replacement, and whereas, the city identifies the need. For Water and Wastewater Communication Hardware Upgrade Pre-Design Services which will serve as a baseline for future design effort of the development of plans and specifications for replacing outdated and unsupported PLCs and communication hardware across water treatment, distribution, and the wastewater collection system, and whereas, HDR Engineering, Inc., by reason of their past experience, knowledge, and abilities for performing these types of services, are qualified to perform the required consulting services for the project, and whereas, the Water System Communications Hardware Upgrade Project: Project number WA two-five-zero-two is included in the FI twenty twenty-four to twenty-five capital improvement plan with a project budget of one million two hundred thousand dollars, and whereas, ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollar will be funded from the Water Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-twenty), where sufficient funds are budgeted and available for this agreement, and whereas, the Wastewater System Communications Hardware Upgrade Project is not included in the FI twenty twenty-four to twenty-five capital improvement plan. And therefore requires an appropriation in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollar in the Sewer Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-thirty), and whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore. BIT resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for pre-designed services for the Water and Wastewater Communication Hardware Upgrade Project: Project number WA two-five-zero-two, not to exceed amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars in appropriation of funds. BIT further resolved that the finance director is authorized to appropriate sixty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollar in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five Sewer Operating Fund (Fund five-hundred-and-thirty) for pre-designed services for the Water and Wastewater Communications Hardware Upgrade Project for a total project budget of one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May twenty twenty-five by the following roll call vote: Resolution number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-four Page one of two Eyes, Nose, Absent, Obstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S attest.
Twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five Agenda Section: Consent Calendar Subject: Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine A Resolution Authorizing A. City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Design Consulting Services with Leathers and Associates for the Kids Play Park Renovation Project. Project Number PK twenty-five oh one, from. Parks and Recreation Department Recommendation/City Council Action Staff Recommends the City Council Approve Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Design Consulting Services with Leathers and Associates for the Kids Play Park Renovation Project. Project Number PK twenty-five oh one. Background/Issue Folsom Kids Play Park, also known as Castle Park, is located at two oh one Pruitt Drive south of Oak Chan Elementary School in the Willow Creek Estates South Neighborhood. Attachment two. The park is two point one acres and is home to the beloved castle-themed wooden playground Castle Park designed by Robert Leathers and built by the community in nineteen ninety-six. The wooden play structures are almost thirty years old and have reached the end of their useful life. With replacement parts no longer available, the city has decided to completely replace the wooden play structures while staying within the original thirteen thousand square foot footprint. The process for replacing the existing playground starts with selecting a design consultant to provide the design intent and produce construction drawings and specifications which are then used for bidding and ultimately construction of the project. The Parks and Recreation Department issued a request for proposal, RFP, for playground design services for Folsom Kids Play Park on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The playground design process includes the creation of a new custom playground design, preparation of construction documents and one specifications, community engagement, providing fundraising assistance and construction assistance. Policy/Rule in accordance with Chapter two point three six of the Folsom Municipal Code, public works projects or purchases costing seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollar or greater shall be awarded by the City Council. Analysis: The RFP was publicly advertised, and the due date was April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. A total of four proposals were received by April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. A full review of the four proposals was conducted by staff from the Parks and Recreation Department. The proposals were evaluated based on awaited response to the following requested proposal criteria: Evaluation Factors Criteria One. Vision/Understanding Two. Discussion of Scope of Work Three. Qualifications/Experience/Fundraising Assistance Five. Work Schedule Seven. Cost Proposal Total Potential Points Potential Points Twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five, five, twenty-five, one hundred although the purchase and installation of playground equipment were outside the defined scope of work. Several firms considered these elements essential to their standard services and therefore either included them in their cost proposals or noted them as limitations to their proposals. This is reflected in the varying price range of cost proposals provided. The firms received the following rankings for their proposals: Firm Proposal Points Ranking Leathers and Associates ninety-five point zero zero one Play by Design eighty-four point zero zero two Zoom Recreation fifty-four point three 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 BCI Burke twenty-eight point three three four Cost Proposal Total. Eighty-one thousand six hundred and forty dollars, forty-eight thousand one hundred dollars, six hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollar following a comprehensive evaluation of the proposals in accordance with the RFP criteria. Staff recommends awarding the Kids Play Park Renovation Project Playground Design Contract to Leathers and Associates. The evaluation team found that Leathers and Associates demonstrated a strong understanding of the project's significance to the community, with a clear alignment to the overall project vision and an emphasis on creating a meaningful sense of place in the new playground. Their proposal also reflected a deep commitment to community engagement, two adherence to the proposed project schedule, and relevant experience in supporting community-led fundraising initiatives. Additionally, their cost proposal is considered reasonable in relation to the defined scope of work. In accordance with Folsom Municipal Code, Chapter two point three six point one one zero, the award of a contract shall be made to the responsible offer or whose proposal is determined in writing to be the most advantageous to the city, taking into consideration price and the evaluation factors set forth in the request for proposals. In accordance with Folsom Municipal Code, Chapter two point three six point zero eight zero, public works projects or purchases costing seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollar or greater shall be awarded by the City Council. Financial Impact: The total estimated cost of the Kids Play Park Renovation Project, Project Number PK twenty-five oh one, is one point one million dollars. As part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five budget, the City Council approved eight hundred thousand dollars toward the project out of the general fund. The remaining three hundred thousand dollars is expected to be funded by a community-led group. Leathers and Associates has submitted a cost proposal of eighty-one thousand six hundred and forty dollars for their services. Sufficient funds are budgeted and available within the adopted fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five budget to cover this agreement. Environmental Review Per California Environmental Quality Act (CEQA) Guide Lines. Replacing an existing playground is exempt from environmental review since the project involves minor alterations to an existing public facility with negligible or no expansion of use. Attachments One. Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Design Consulting Services with Leathers and Associates for the Kids Play Park Renovation Project. Two Kids Play Park Renovation Project Locations Submitted: Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Department Director Three Attachment One Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Design Consulting Services Agreement with Leathers and Associates for the Kids Play Park Renovation Project. Project Number PK twenty-five oh one, whereas, Folsom Kids Play Park with its castle-themed wood play structure was built in nineteen ninety-six and has served as an iconic, memorable, and beloved destination for play since it was built, and whereas, the wooden play structure has reached the effective end of its useful life and requires complete replacement, end. Whereas, on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, staff issued a request for proposal for playground design services for Folsom Kids Play Park pursuant to Section two point three six point one one zero of the Folsom Municipal Code, and whereas, by April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, staff received four qualified proposals, and whereas, following evaluation and ranking of the proposals, Leathers and Associates was selected based on their qualifications, understanding of the scope of work, and extensive experience in park design and community engagement, end. Whereas, the Kids Play Park Renovation Project, Project Number PK two-five zero one, is included in the FI twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five capital improvement plan and includes funding for design of the project, and whereas, there are sufficient funds budgeted in the general fund and available in the FI twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five budget to cover the cost of the agreement, and whereas, the design and consulting services agreement shall be in a form acceptable to the city attorney. Now, therefore, BIT resolved that the city manager is authorized to execute a design and consulting services agreement with Leathers and Associates for design services for the Kids Play Park Renovation Project, Project Number PK two-five zero one, for a total not to exceed amount of eighty-one thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May twenty-twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, knows, absent, abstain, council member, S council member, S council member, S council member, S attest.
To the City Attorney, now, therefore, BIT resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the City Manager to execute Amendment Number One to the Agreement, Contract Number Seventeen Thousand Three Hundred and Twenty One Twenty Three Dash Zero Zero Nine, with Dominichelli and Associates, Inc. for Design and Engineering Services during construction for the Water System Rehabilitation Project Number Three, Project WA Two Three Zero One, in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and the updated contract not to exceed amount, including Amendment Number One is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and four dollars, and passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Council Member, S Council Member, S Council Member, S Council Member, S Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Ninety-one, page one of two. Attest. Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Sarah Aquino, Mayor Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Ninety-one, page two of two. Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date: May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Agenda Section: Public Hearing Subject. Presentation by staff in compliance with Assembly Bill Twenty Five Sixty-One slash Government Code Section Three Thousand Five Hundred and Two Point Three regarding City Vacancies, Recruitment, and Retention Efforts from Human Resources Department Recommendation slash City Council Action Assembly Bill, A B, Two Thousand Five Hundred and Sixty-One Mandates. That public agencies hold at least one, one, public hearing per fiscal year to discuss vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. This communication, along with the public presentation, discusses the city's legal obligations under the new law, which took effect on January first, twenty twenty-five. The presentation is provided for informational purposes only and offers an overview of the city's vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. Staff recommend that the City Council receives the presentation for informational purposes during the public hearing. The city's recognized labor organizations have been provided with an opportunity to make a presentation on such subjects. Background slash issue of Two Thousand Five Hundred and Sixty-One was introduced to address the issue of job vacancies in local government, which adversely affects the delivery of public services and employee workload. Furthermore, the purpose of the legislation is to promote transparency in public sector employment practices. The bill mandates that public agencies conduct a public hearing to present the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts during a public hearing before the agency's governing body at least once per fiscal year prior to the adoption of the next fiscal year's budget, Governor Code Thirty Five Oh Two Point Three, A, One, and identify any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process, Governor Code Thirty Five Oh Two Point Three, A, Three. The bill was enacted into law and is codified as Government Code Section Three Thousand Five Hundred and Two Point Three, effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Analysis in Compliance with the New Legal Obligations: The city reports the following. One-one. Public Hearing Report on Vacancies. For the twenty twenty-four calendar year, the city's annual average percentage of vacancies, i.e., regular, full-time equivalent, is seven percent. The table below shows a breakdown of the percentage of vacancies, regular full-time equivalent, at the beginning of each month, twenty twenty-four Jan, Feb, Mar, April, May, June, July, Aug, September, Oct., Nov., Dec., December, number of vacancies, number of beginning of the month separations, citywide. Thirty-six, five, thirty-eight, three, thirty-four, five, thirty-five, three, thirty-three, four, thirty-three, thirty-nine, one, thirty-eight, five, thirty-five, one, thirty-four, one, thirty-four, three, thirty-seven, nine, average number of new hires, four, four, ten, three, five, six, three, six, three, two, five, six, number of budgeted FTEs, four hundred and ninety point five, 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 five hundred and three 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 point five. Eight percent, seven percent, seven percent, seven percent, six percent, eight percent, eight percent, seven percent, seven percent, seven percent, seven percent, seven percent. Filling some of our vacant positions has proven to be a challenge, especially for roles that require specific skills or experience. Like many organizations, we are seeing a smaller pool of applicants and more competition for qualified candidates. To help address this, we have intensified our recruitment efforts by expanding job advertisements across multiple platforms, including industry-specific websites, our official website, and social media channels. We're also tapping into local networks and professional groups to increase visibility and attract a diverse applicant pool. Two Employee Organization Participation: The Human Resources Department notified the six, six, represented bargaining units at the city the opportunity to present, Governor Code Thirty Five Oh Two Point Three, B, satisfying the requirement to allow the recognized employee organization for each bargaining unit at the city to make presentations during the public hearing concerning vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. Three Additional Reporting for High Vacancy Rates: If vacancies within a single bargaining unit meet or exceed twenty percent of authorized full-time positions in that bargaining unit, upon request of the recognized employee organization for that bargaining unit, the city must provide additional information during the public hearing, including the following: One, the total number of vacancies within the bargaining unit; Two, the number of applicants; Three, the average number of days to fill positions; And, four. Opportunities to Improve Two Compensation and Working Conditions for Employees in the Bargaining Unit, Governor Code Thirty Five Oh Two Point Three, C. In the twenty twenty-four calendar year, all bargaining units within the city maintained vacancy rates below twenty percent, as summarized below. Twenty twenty-four Annual Average Vacancy Rate Bargaining Unit International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Thirty-Nine, Folsom Middle Management Group, FMMG, Folsom Police Officers Association, FPOA, Folsom Police Management, FPMA, Sacramento Area Firefighters, Local Five Hundred and Twenty-Two, Folsom Fire Middle Management Employees. Percentage six percent, seventeen percent, seven percent, zero percent, three percent, zero percent, confidential twenty twenty-four annual average vacancy. Rate Unrepresented Unit Percentage Twelve Percent Financial Impact There is no direct fiscal impact associate conducting the public hearing required under Government Code Section Three Thousand Two Hundred and Two Point Three. Respectfully submitted, Allison Garcia, Human Resources Director. Three Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date: May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Agenda Section: Public Hearing Subject. Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Eighty-Seven, A Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number Eight Thousand Seven Hundred and Ninety-two and Adopting a New Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule with Annual Adjustment Not to Exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI, from Parks and Recreation Department Recommendation slash Council Action Staff recommend that the City Council approve Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Eighty-Seven, A. Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number Eight Thousand Seven Hundred and Ninety-two and Adopting a New Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule with Annual Adjustment Not to Exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI. Background: The Folsom City Council adopted a strategic plan that sets goals and priorities. The recommendations for the community facilities rental fee schedule align with supporting the city council's priorities of financial stability. The Parks and Recreation Department offers a broad range of indoor and outdoor facilities for rent for special events, meetings, and gatherings. In FI Two Hundred and Two Thousand Three Hundred and Twenty-four, the department generated four hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollar in rental fee revenue. The department values its commitment to the community but also recognizes that certain services primarily benefit individuals or businesses. On an ongoing basis, the department will review and adjust fees and create new fees. According to the Folsom Municipal Code, any changes to the community facility rental fees must be approved by the City Council. In June two thousand and two, the City Council adopted Resolution Number Six Thousand Eight Hundred and Sixty-nine, Amending Resolution Number Three Thousand Eight Hundred and Twenty-four, which established a fee structure for the Folsom Community Center. In June two thousand and seven, the City Council adopted Resolution Number Eight Thousand and Fifty-three, which rescinded Resolution Number Six Thousand Eight Hundred and Sixty-nine, to establish a new fee schedule for the Folsom Community Center. In February two thousand and eleven, the City Council adopted Resolution Number Eight Thousand Seven Hundred and Ninety-two, which rescinded Resolution Number Eight Thousand and Fifty-three, to establish a new fee schedule for the Folsom Community Center. Since then, no adjustments have been made to the fee schedule and no new rental facilities have been added. One on September third, twenty twenty-four, the Folsom Parks and Recreation Commission received the proposed fee schedule and unanimously recommended that the Folsom City Council approve the schedule, including provisions for annual adjustments not to exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI. Policies slash Rule Folsom Municipal Code, Section Three Point Seven Zero Point Zero Two Zero as used in this code. Fees for rental of city facilities includes but is not limited to: the fees for rental of the community center, R.G. Smith Clubhouse, City Park Pavilion, City Park Gazebo and Lou Howard Park Pavilion. O.R.D. Seven Hundred and Twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-one, Folsom Municipal Code, Section Three Point Seven Zero Point Zero Three Zero. Service Charges states that the fees for rental of city facilities shall be established by resolution of the City Council. O.R.D. Seven Hundred and Twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-one. Analysis Before Establishing a New Fee or Recommending Any Changes to the Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule: Staff have considered factors such as market demand, competition, and the cost of services. The comparison of indoor facilities can be found in Attachment Two, and the proposed community facility rental fees in Attachment Three. Moving forward, changes to the community facility rental fee schedule will be evaluated annually and adjusted by an amount not to exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI, with an updated fee schedule effective at the beginning of the fiscal year. These fees will be brought to the City Council annually as a part of the annual city fee schedule. Community Facility Rental Fee Indoor Space Staff are recommending fee increases to indoor rental spaces due to high demand and market rate adjustments for rental space. Currently, indoor facilities are booked between eighty-two percent to eighty-eight percent. Additionally, staff compared other similar indoor venues of other agencies within the region, Community Facility Rental Fee Analysis Attachment Two. Through this comparison, the City of Folsom rental fees were on average thirty percent lower than our neighboring public venues. In addition, staff took into account that although our fees are lower, that the majority of the Folsom facilities are over twenty years old and have decades of deferred maintenance. It is the recommendation from Parks and Recreation Commission and staff that the rental fees for the indoor venues increase beginning September first, twenty twenty-five, with an annual increase from the Consumer Price Index, CPI, applied to our indoor rentable facilities each year. This will help with facilities being priced appropriately and within the market for available spaces. Any adjustments to the facility rental rates will be shown to the City Council with the overall CPI adjustments presented to them annually for city fees. Outdoor Venues The department offers a variety of outdoor venues for rent that are unique to the region. Examples of the outdoor venues include the Dan Russell Rodeo Arena. This arena currently hosts events and activities annually. Because of the impact these events and activities bring to the site, staff recommend a twenty percent increase in the daily rental rate for the Dan Russell Rodeo Arena. Staff recommend establishing new fees for city-owned property in the Folsom Historic District including the Zittle Family Amphitheater, Turntable, and Alleyway. To date, these fees have not too been captured in the Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule. Based on historical usage rates, staff are recommending a decrease in the hourly rate but a new four-hour minimum rental fee for use of the areas. Additionally, staff recommends adding the current per-user fee to the fee schedule. The Johnny Cash Trail Per-User Fee is for organized special events and fun runs that use the existing trail and align with the City of Folsom strategic plan on funding for the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience. An example of a special event per user rate that pays a fee for use of the Johnny Cash Trail is the annual Folsom Turkey Trot. Park Pavilions Several park pavilions are available for rent at select park sites to accommodate exclusive use. Staff compared costs to the park pavilions at Elk Grove Regional Park, Elk Grove, and City of Roseville Picnic Rentals. The analysis showed these locations charge between eleven dollars and thirteen cents to thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents per hour based upon the capacity of the rental area for use time ranging from six hours to eight hours. The department recommends a change in the rental fee for the park pavilions applying dollar twenty point zero zero slash hour as the base rate for our pavilions with less than one hundred capacities and dollar twenty-five point zero zero slash hour for pavilions with over one hundred capacities. This fee will be in line with the current market. Additionally, staff recommend adding new fees for the Broder Family Homestead Park Pavilion, Prospector Park Pavilion, and Nissen and Park Pavilion to the fee schedule. The proposed fees for these sites are in line with rates for similar-sized pavilion rental locations. Staff recently launched a new online platform that allows the community to rent park pavilions and staff can adjust, add, and delete availability as needed and demand warrants. All park pavilions are available first come, first served, unless someone rents it with seven days' advance notice. The registration system will only allow someone to rent a park pavilion within sixty days of the current date. Annually, staff will review the availability of any new park pavilion sites to be added to the park pavilion rental inventory with appropriate rates based upon size. Cost Recovery in accordance with the Parks and Recreation Department User Fees and Charges Policy, Resolution Number Seven Thousand Eight Hundred and Sixty-eight, adopted by the Folsom City Council, identifies facility rentals with a moderate cost recovery rate of fifty percent, seventy-five percent. The current cost recovery rate for our community facilities is seventy-seven percent. The new recommended fee schedule is projected to increase cost recovery to eighty-nine percent from analysis of current approximate expenses in relation to rental revenue. Financial Impact Staff estimate an increase in annual rental revenue by approximately one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars with the proposed fee increases. This increase could be higher or lower than estimated depending on rental activity levels. New fees will be implemented on September first, twenty twenty-five, for any new rental reservations. Environmental Review There is no environmental impact. Three Attachments One. Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Eighty-Seven, A Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number Eight Thousand Seven Hundred and Ninety-two and Adopting a New Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule with Annual Adjustment Not to Exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI. Two. Community Facility Rental Fee Analysis Three. Current and Proposed Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule Respectfully Submitted, Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Director. Four Attachment One Resolution No. Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Eighty-Seven A Resolution Rescinding Resolution No. Eight Thousand Seven Hundred and Ninety-two and Adopting a New Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule with Annual Adjustment Not to Exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI, whereas, the City of Folsom owns community facilities that are available for public use and include Folsom Community Center, Robert H. Miller Three Rotary Clubhouse, Dan Russell Rodeo Arena, Zittle Family Amphitheater, Historic Folsom Turntable and Alleyway, Johnny Cash Trail, and Park Pavilions, and whereas, these community facilities provide a gathering place for many residents, businesses, and organizations to host social, business, and community gatherings, and whereas, the city seeks to offer a fair and equitable rental fee schedule that recovers costs due to operations and maintenance of these facilities, and whereas, the City of Folsom desires to maximize the cost recovery of the community facilities rental program while providing a high level of customer service, and whereas, the effective date of the facility rental fee schedule shall be September one, twenty twenty-five, and whereas, the indoor community facilities that include the Folsom Community Center and Robert H. Miller Rotary Clubhouse will be adjusted annually not to exceed the Consumer Price Index, CPI, and that staff will include future fee adjustments to City Council with the Finance Department for Inflationary Adjustments in July. Now, therefore, BIT resolved, that the City Council of the City of Folsom adopts the attached community facility rental fee schedule. BIT further resolved that Resolution Number Eight Thousand Seven Hundred and Ninety-two is hereby rescinded. Pass and Adopted on this twenty-seventh day of May twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Council Member, S Council Member, S Council Member, S Council Member, S Sarah Aquino, Mayor Attest. Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Eighty-Seven, page one of one. Attachment Two Agency City of Citrus Heights Community Center City of Citrus Heights Community Center La Sierra Community Center, Carmichael, City of Folsom City of Citrus Heights Community Center Carmichael Park Clubhouse Uzmaidu. Community Center City of Folsom SQFT List Rate Slash HR Community Facility Rental Program Fee Schedule Cost Per SQ Foot Dining Capacity Resident Slash Business Rate Slash HR Nonprofit Cost Per SQ Foot Rate Slash HR Rest Slash NP Required Minimum Hours. Community Center Full Ballroom Comparisons Eleven Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-One Dollars Three Cents Seven Hundred and Fifty Two Hundred and Ninety-Four Dollars Two Hundred and Ninety-Four Dollars Three Cents Eight Hours Seven Thousand Two Hundred Three Hundred and Twenty-Three Dollars Four Cents Four Hundred Two Hundred and Sixty-Three Dollars Two Hundred and Sixty-Three Dollars Three Cents Eight Hours Six Thousand One Hundred and Seventy-Four One Hundred and Ninety-Five Dollars Eight Thousand Five Hundred Two Hundred and Sixty Dollars Three Cents Three Cents Three Hundred and Eighty-Five One Hundred and Eighty Dollars One Hundred and Twenty-Five Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Three Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero Two And Slash A. Sun Thursday Four Hours Five Hundred and Eight One Hundred and Eighty Dollars One Hundred and Twenty-Five Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Two Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero One. Friday Slash Set Eight Hours Community Center Half Ballroom Comparisons Three Thousand Six Hundred Two Hundred and Thirty-Five Dollars Six Cents Four Thousand Four Hundred and Eighty One Hundred and Twenty-Five Dollars Three Cents Four Thousand Three Hundred and Thirty-Five One Hundred and Sixty Dollars Four Thousand Two Hundred and Fifty One Hundred and Thirty Dollars Three Cents Three Cents One Hundred and Seventy Two Hundred and Six Dollars Two Hundred and Six Dollars Five Cents Eight Hours One Hundred and Fifty One Hundred and Nineteen Dollars Eighty Seven Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Two Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero One And Slash A. Two Hundred and Fifty One Hundred and Thirty-Five Dollars One Hundred and Thirty-Five Dollars Three Cents And A. Sun Thursday Four Hours Two Hundred and Seventy-Five Ninety-Five Dollars Seventy Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Two Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero Two Friday Slash Set Eight Hours Notes. Full Hall Two Thirts Hall Folsom Nonprofits Only One Third Hall Clubhouse Reception Hall Folsom Nonprofits Only Agency City of Citrus Heights Community Center La Sierra Community Center Maidu Community. Center Carmichael Park City of Folsom City of Citrus Heights Community Center Maidu Community Center City of Folsom SQFT List Rate Slash HR Community Facility Rental Program Fee Schedule Cost Per SQ Foot Dining Capacity Resident Slash Business Rate Slash HR Nonprofit Cost Per SQ Foot Rate Slash HR Rest Slash NP Required Minimum Hours. R.G. Smith Room Comparisons One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty One Hundred and Seventeen Dollars Eight Cents Sixty Ninety-Four Dollars Ninety-Four Dollars Seven Cents Four Hours Nine Hundred and Sixty One Forty-Five Dollars Four Cents Fifty Forty-Two Dollars Thirty-Six Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Four Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero Three Two Hours One Thousand One Hundred and Seventy-Eight Seventy Dollars Six Cents Seventy-Two Sixty Dollars Sixty Dollars Five Cents Two Hours One Thousand Two Hundred. One Thousand Seventy-Five Dollars Fifty Five Dollars Six Cents Seventy-Five Seventy-One Dollars Sixty-One Dollars Zero Point Zero Six Slash Zero Point Zero Five Two Hours Sun Thursday Four Hours Six Cents Fifty Forty-Five Dollars Twenty-Five Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Five Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero Three Friday Slash Set Eight Hours Robert H. Miller Three Rotary Clubhouse Comparisons Two Thousand Seven Hundred One Hundred and Forty-Six Dollars Five Cents One Thousand Eight Hundred and Ninety One Hundred and Thirty-Five Dollars Three Thousand Two Hundred One Hundred Dollars Seven Cents Three Cents One Hundred and Twenty One Hundred and Seventeen Dollars One Hundred and Seventeen Dollars Four Cents Four Hours One Hundred and Thirty-Five One Hundred and Fifteen Dollars One Hundred and Fifteen Dollars Six Cents Two Hours Sun Thursday Four Hours One Hundred and Twenty Eight Eighty Dollars Thirty Dollars Dollar Zero Point Zero Three Slash Dollar Zero Point Zero One Friday Slash Set Eight Hours Notes. Room South A Room Eight Hundred Meeting Room Veterans Hall Folsom Nonprofits Only Room South ABC Meeting Room One and Two Folsom Non. Profits Only Attachment Three Community Face Alights Current and Proposed Fees Indoor Venues Rates Are Based on the Minimum Rental Time. Current Minimum Hours: Eight Hours on Friday and Saturday, Four Hours Sunday through Thursday. Asterisk Last Fee Update Was in February two thousand and eleven or two thousand and seven Location asterisk Community Center Ballroom Current Rates List Rate Resident Nonprofit Proposed Rate List Rate Resident Nonprofit Twenty-Five Percent Disc. Twenty Percent Disc. Friday, Saturday Dollar Two Sixty Slash HR Dollar One Eighty Slash HR Dollar One Twenty-Five Slash HR Dollar Three Twelve Slash HR Dollar Two Thirty Four Slash HR Dollar One Eighty Seven Slash HR Sunday Thursday Dollar Two Sixty Slash HR Dollar One Eighty Slash HR Dollar One Twenty-Five Slash HR Dollar Three Twelve Slash HR Dollar Two Thirty Four Slash HR Dollar One Eighty Seven Slash HR Asterisk Community Center East Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Sunday, Thursday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West Room Friday, Saturday Dollar One Thirty Slash HR Dollar Ninety-Five Slash HR Dollar Seventy Slash HR Dollar One Fifty-Six Slash HR Dollar One Seventeen Slash HR Dollar Ninety Four Slash HR Asterisk Community Center West 2 Outdoor Venues Hourly Rates Are Listed Unless Otherwise Specified Location Current Rate Proposed Rate Dan Russell Rodeo Arena. Per Day Dollar. One Thousand Five Hundred One Thousand Eight Hundred Dollars Each Day Of Use Percent Change List Rate Twenty Percent Twenty Percent Twenty Percent Twenty Percent New New Thirty Percent Percent Change Twenty Percent Zittle Family Amphitheater. Proposed Four HR Minimum. Currently Dollar One Seventy-Five Slash HR With No Minimum Timeframe One Hundred and Seventy-Five Dollars One Hundred and Fifty Dollar Turntable. Proposed Four HR Minimum. Currently Dollar One Twenty-Five Slash HR With No Minimum Timeframe One Hundred and Twenty-Five Dollars One Hundred Dollar Alleyway. Proposed Four HR Minimum. Seventy-Five Dollars Fifty Dollars Currently Dollar Seventy-Five Slash HR With No Minimum Timeframe Johnny Cash Trail. Per User. Location Broder Park Pavilion. Seventy-Person Capacity. Three Dollar Park Pavilions Daily Rates For Up To Eight Hours. Between nine A.M. to eight P.M. Current Rate Daily Zero Dollar New Folsom City Lions Park Gazebo. Two Hundred Plus Person Capacity. Two Hundred and Fifty Dollar Folsom City Lions Park Pavilion. Two Hundred Person Capacity. Two Hundred and Fifty Dollar Folsom City Lions Park Front Grass. Event Space. Zero Dollar New Lou Howard Park Pavilion. Two Hundred Person Capacity. Two Hundred and Fifty Dollar Livermore Park Pavilion. Seventy Person Capacity. Two Hundred and Fifty Dollar John Kemp Park Pavilion. Seventy Person Capacity. Two Hundred and Fifty Dollar Nissen and Park Pavilion. Seventy Person Capacity. Zero Dollar New Prospector Park Pavilion. Seventy Person Capacity. Zero Dollar New Three Dollars Proposed Rate Daily Dollar.
Five to twenty-six to be funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Background/Issue On April twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, California Governor Brown Signed Into Law Senate Bill One, SB One, Which Establishes the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, R M R A, To Address Deferred Maintenance on the State Highway and Local Street and Road Systems. The bill states that funds shall be used for projects that include, but are not limited to, the following: Road maintenance and rehabilitation safety projects railroad-grade separations complete street components, including active transportation purposes, pedestrian and bicycle safety projects, transit facilities, and drainage and storm water capture projects traffic control devices match for state/federal funds for eligible projects purchase of equipment needed for eligible. Roadway and infrastructure maintenance One, the city of Folsom is estimated to receive approximately two point three million dollars of R M R A funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five twenty-six Senate Bill One, SB One, Funds will be allocated to support the following infrastructure projects and equipment purchase aimed at enhancing transportation and pedestrian safety, roadway maintenance, and overall operational efficiency. Project Title: Citywide Data Compliance Project (F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six) F I twenty-five dash twenty-six SB One Funding: Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar schedule F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six Useful Life: Fifty years Description: A project that includes an annual rotation of sidewalk inspections and repairs, with one council district receiving attention each year. This ensures a systematic and ongoing effort to improve accessibility across the city for people with disabilities and to mitigate sidewalk uplifts and damage. These funds will be used to inspect Council District One and make required repairs. A portion of the funds will be utilized to address the remaining significant findings within Council District Four, which was inspected and partially repaired in F I twenty-four to twenty-five. Project Title: Street Overlay/Pavement Management Project (F I twenty-five dash twenty-six) SB One Funding: One million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar schedule F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six Useful Life: Twenty-five years Description: This project is currently in the scoping phase. The neighborhoods listed below are being considered for analysis. Contingent upon the available budget and pavement maintenance treatment selected: Rancho Diablo, Hancock Drive Neighborhood, Willow Creek Estates, Willow Creek Drive and Flower Drive Neighborhood, and Willow Creek Estates East, Bitter Creek Drive and Big Valley Road Neighborhood. The city of Folsom currently has an overall pavement condition index, P C I, value of sixty-seven, which is described as fair, according to Streetsaver, the software program that the Public Works Department utilizes to manage the city's pavement management program. It's worth noting that the P C I was seventy-four, described as good, in twenty-twenty. Future projections show that at the pre-SB One funding level, this P C I value would degrade to forty-two, poor, by the year twenty thirty-seven and value to thirty-two, very poor, by twenty forty-five. Due to this rapid, yet expected, degradation of the pavement system, this SB One funding source is valuable in helping to maintain the city of Folsom's overall pavement network. However, even with these SB One funds, the P C I continues to trend downward. The pavement management plan estimates that in order to maintain the pavement network in its current condition an investment of twelve million dollars annually would be required. However, the program is currently funded for approximately two million dollars per year. Policies/Rule To Receive SB One Funds: Local agencies are required by the California Transportation Commission, C T C, to annually submit a list of projects that may be constructed and funded to with R M R A funds, and the list must be part of an approved resolution. The list of projects allows the city to scope the capital improvements to meet the available funding. Analysis Staff has reviewed the most recent SB One reporting and spending requirements and found them to be reasonable and realistic to achieve. Financial Impact R M R A revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six is estimated to be two point three million dollars. Adopting this list of eligible projects authorizes staff to use the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six funding for the projects on the list. Environmental Review This action is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A. Attachments One: Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven, A Resolution Adopting a List of Projects for Fiscal Year Two Hundred and Two Thousand Five Hundred and Twenty-Six to be Funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act Map of Street Overlay/Pavement Management Project (F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six) Submitted: Marcus Yasutaki, Acting Public Works Director Three Attachment One: Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven A Resolution Adopting a List of Projects for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five to Twenty-Six to be Funded by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act Whereas, Senate Bill One, SB One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen, Chapter Five, Statutes of two thousand and seventeen, was passed by the legislature and signed into law by California Governor Brown in April two thousand and seventeen to address the significant multimodal transportation funding shortfall statewide, and whereas, SB One includes accountability and transparency provisions. That will ensure that Folsom residents are aware of the projects proposed for funding in their community, and which projects have been completed each fiscal year, and whereas, the city must pass a resolution adopting a list of eligible projects proposed to receive funding from the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, R M R A, created by SB One, which must include a description and the location of each proposed project, a proposed schedule for the project's completion, and the estimated useful life of the improvement, and whereas, the list of projects will include projects that may not be completed in the fiscal year allotted due to available funding, and whereas, the city will receive an estimated two point three million dollar in R M R A funding from SB One in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six, and whereas, this is the ninth year in which the city is receiving SB One funding that will enable the city to continue essential pavement resurfacing and concrete projects that would not have otherwise been possible. Without SB One, and whereas, the city used a combination of the pavement management system and known priorities to develop the SB One project list to ensure revenues are being used on the most high priority and cost-effective pavement resurfacing projects that also meet Folsom's priorities for transportation investment, and whereas, the SB One project list and overall investment in Folsom's local streets and roads infrastructure, with a focus on basic maintenance and safety, investing in the complete streets infrastructure, and using cutting-edge technology, materials, and practices will have significant positive C O benefits citywide, and whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore, B I T resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom approves this resolution adopting the list of projects below to be funded in F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six by Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven Page One of Two Project Citywide Data Compliance Project (F I twenty-five to twenty-six) Street Overlay/Pavement Management (F I twenty-five to twenty-six) Project Completion June twenty twenty-six June twenty twenty-six Estimated Useful Life Fifty-year life twenty-five-year life Passed and Adopted This Twenty-seventh Day of May twenty twenty-five By the Following Role Call Vote Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S attest Sarah Aquino, Mayor Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven Page Two of Two Attachment Two: Folsom City Council Staff Report Etting Date: May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Agenda Section: New Business Subject Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-five A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Interagency Agreement for Cost-Sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum From Environmental and Water Resources Department Recommendation/City Council Action The Environmental and Water Resources Department recommends the City Council pass and adopt Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-five A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Interagency Agreement for Cost-Sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum. Background/Issue In January of two thousand, the Water Forum was formed to provide a safe, reliable water supply and preserve the value of the Lower American River. Through a collaborative effort of twenty-one water purveyors, environmental interest groups, citizens' organizational groups and business groups, the Water Forum Agreement, W F A, was signed to endorse and, where appropriate, participate in each of the seven complementary actions: One Increase Surface Water Diversions Two Implement Actions to Meet Customer Needs While Reducing Diversion Impacts in the Dryer Years Three Support an Improved Pattern of Fishery Flow Releases from Folsom Reservoir Four Support Lower American River Habitat Management Element Five Support the Water Conservation Element Six Support Groundwater Management Element Seven Support the Water Forum Successor Effort The Water Forum brings together a diverse group of businesses, citizen groups, environmentalists, water providers, and local governments. Members collaborate under the W F A to balance two equal objectives: Provide a reliable and safe water supply for the region's economic health and planned development through to the year twenty thirty, and preserve the Lower American River's fishery, wildlife, recreational, and aesthetic values. The original W F A is set to expire in twenty thirty. From the beginning, the Water Forum has played a central role for the region in ensuring regional water supply reliability and protecting the health of the Lower American River by providing a venue for collaborative problem-solving. By coming together to support each other's shared priorities, Water Forum members facilitated significant infrastructure projects, built a culture of trust, and enabled quick responses to crises like drought, all without resorting to gridlock or litigation. This resolution will authorize the City Manager to execute an interagency agreement for cost-sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum. Policies/Rule In accordance with Chapter two point three six of the Folsom Municipal Code, Supplies, Equipment, Services, and Construction with a value of seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollar or greater shall be awarded by City Council. Analysis Under the current W F A, the Water Forum Successor Effort, W F S E, will continue negotiations of various environmental activities to protect the Lower American River, support the renewal of the water diversion agreements of the signatories, develop updates as necessary the Lower American River Flow Management Standard, and assist with other necessary regional water management activities to meet W F S E goals. The historic success in this program has positioned both Folsom and the region to be eligible for funding opportunities through collaborative efforts. For the last five years, Water Forum members have been actively negotiating terms for an updated Water Forum Agreement. The negotiations have focused on addressing the unprecedented challenges posed by climate change projected to bring hotter, drier periods and intense rainfall, increasing pressure on Folsom reservoir and our fishery and future growth. The draft of the updated agreement includes commitments to continue the important work that the Water Forum has led for over two decades. This includes habitat enhancement in the Lower American River. By leveraging funding from local, state, and federal partners, the Water Forum has invested over thirty-eight point eight million dollar in local and grant funding for habitat enhancement and public education since two thousand. Its pioneering studies have yielded invaluable insights into habitat enhancement strategies and species behavior from detailed underwater maps of the river to monitoring salmon in drought conditions. Flow Management Standard, F M S The F M S uses the best available science to set targets for minimum river flows and cold water storage at Folsom Reservoir to help preserve water storage and improve water temperature in the Lower American River for salmon and steelhead. After nearly twenty years of study and refinement, the modified F M S is now seen as the best path forward for protecting and restoring steelhead and fall-run Chinook salmon in the Lower American River, while improving local water supply reliability without causing negative impacts elsewhere in the state. Increased Conjunctive Use: The Water Forum provides a crucial collaborative foundation essential to successfully expanding conjunctive use through the Sacramento Regional Water Bank. A Foundation for Funding Success: State planning and regulatory frameworks emphasize the interconnectedness of surface water, groundwater, and the environment. The Water Forum showcases the region's commitment to protecting both water supplies and the environment, positioning us for significant funding opportunities. Effective Advocacy: Over the past decade, regulatory demands on water management have intensified, highlighting the importance of strong regional advocacy. Engaging through the Water Forum helps to ensure our voice is heard by critical operators in the watershed like the U S Bureau of Reclamation and Groundwater Agencies can more effectively influence policies and safeguard regional interests. Commitments for Regional Coordination and Water Management: Continued dialogue for common interests within the region related to habitat improvements, regional water supply reliability, and public education and outreach. During negotiations, it was identified that a new cost allocation methodology would be necessary to fund the work of the Water Forum beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Previously, funding for multiple agencies was derived from assessments through Sacramento County Water Agency, S C W A, Zone thirteen. However, since Zone thirteen was established thirty-eight years ago without an inflation adjustment, its revenue has remained static while the Water Forum's budget has grown annually to accommodate inflation. As a result, contributions from Zone thirteen towards the Water Forum's work became unsustainable. Zone thirteen funds have historically comprised nearly fifty percent of Water Forum's annual budget. Over several months, water agencies and other funders explored several new funding models to distribute the Water Forum costs equitably. In November twenty twenty-four, stakeholders agreed on an approach involving proportional cost allocations based on agency connection counts, five-year average groundwater production, and a five-year average of American River diversions. Each data set is weighted relative to the benefits derived from Water Forum participation, as summarized in Table One below. Table One: Water Forum Cost Allocation Weighting Factors and Benefits Weighting Agency Data Set Factor Associated Benefits Environmental Stewardship Connection Counts Zero Point Four Zero Maintaining Peace on the River Assistance in the Regulatory Settings Regional Water Supply Reliability Support for More Conjunctive Use Groundwater Production Zero Point Two Zero Activities Regional Collaboration and Partnerships for Projects, Programs, and Funding Regional Coordination and Strategy with American River Zero Point Four Zero Diversions. U S Bureau of Reclamation Protecting the Value and Function of the Lower American River Corridor The attached annual funding agreement reflects the application of the agreed-upon-funding allocation methodology. While the updated Water Forum Agreement is not expected to be finalized until the fall of twenty twenty-five, the new cost allocation model is proposed to be applied in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six. This approach aligns with the agreement in principle reached during the last five years of negotiations. Based on the timing and contents of the final Water Forum Agreement, the annual funding agreements will be updated for fiscal year twenty twenty-six to twenty-seven. Financial Impact The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six water operating budget includes funding for contractual services, including the Water Forum-related expenses. Below is the proposed budget for F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six for the Water Forum Successor Effort and the Habitat Management Element. E W R staff will include the proposed costs in future fiscal year budgets. The city's share is one hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars. The Water Forum requests that cost-sharing partners approve the interagency funding agreement in F I twenty twenty-four to twenty-five so that they can collect funds as soon as possible in F I twenty twenty-five to twenty-six. The parties identified below have each agreed to pay a pro-rata amount of the total costs for funding the Water Forum Successor Effort, W F S E, and Habitat Management Element, H M E, activities, based upon their number of active water connections and the five-year average quantities of groundwater production in American River diversions, or a negotiated amount, as set forth below for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. W F S E Cost Sharing Partners Eldorado Irrigation District Placer County Water Agency City of Folsom, Minus Ashland, City of Roseville San Juan Water District Citrus Heights Water District Fair Oaks Water District Carmichael Water District City of Sacramento Sacramento Suburban Water District Golden State Water Company California American Water Sacramento County Water Agency East Bay Municipal Utility District Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Sacramento Municipal Utility District Eldorado. Water Agency Total: H M E Cost Sharing Partners Eldorado Irrigation District Placer County Water Agency City of Folsom, Minus Ashland, City of Roseville San Juan Water District Citrus Heights Water District Fair Oaks Water District Carmichael Water District City of Sacramento Sacramento Suburban Water District Golden State Water Company California American Water Sacramento County Water Agency East Bay Municipal Utility District Total: F I twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six Cost Share Amounts Sixty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-four fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four sixty-two thousand and fifty-four one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and thirty-eight Fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-four forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five two hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-two ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two thirty-two thousand and ten ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixteen eighty-three thousand three hundred and eleven fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-six twenty thousand twenty-one thousand fifteen thousand one million fifty thousand five hundred and nineteen F I twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six Cost Share Amounts Sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventeen fifty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two fifty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-eight one hundred and two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four thirty-nine thousand three hundred and fourteen thirty thousand four hundred and six twenty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-two hundred and three thousand three hundred and forty-five ninety thousand three hundred and forty-two twenty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-six eighty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-five seventy-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-eight fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-six nine hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-one Environmental Review This project is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, Section fifteen thousand three hundred and one Existing Facilities Attachments One: Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-five A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Interagency Agreement for Cost-Sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum Draft Interagency Agreement for Cost-Sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum Submitted: Marcus Yasutaki, Director Environmental and Water Resources Department Attachment One: Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-five A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Interagency Agreement for Cost-Sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum Whereas, the city of Folsom signed, in January two thousand, the Water Forum Agreement, and whereas, the city of Folsom, through the Water Forum Agreement, has agreed to participate in the Water Forum Successor Effort, W F S E, and whereas, the Habitat Management Element of the Water Forum has invested over thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents million in local and grant funding for habitat enhancement along the Lower American River and public education since two thousand, and whereas, for the last five years, Water Forum members have been actively negotiating terms for an updated Water Forum Agreement, and whereas, the Water Forum Agreement signatories developed a new cost-sharing formula to equitably distribute program costs for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six, and whereas, staff requested funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six in the Water Operating Fund. Fund five hundred and twenty, for this agreement, and whereas, entering into this interagency agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six does not imply that the parties have agreed to this cost allocation formula on a permanent basis or have approved the entirety of the updated Water Forum Agreement, and whereas, the parties are optimistic that the updated Water Forum Agreement will be signed in the fall of twenty twenty-five, but will not assume any obligations pursuant to the Water Forum Agreement until it is final, and whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore, B I T resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the City Manager to execute an interagency agreement for cost-sharing of the Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum. Passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May twenty twenty-five, by the following role call Vote Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-five Page One of Two Sarah Aquino, Mayor Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-five Page Two of Two Attachment Two: Interagency Agreement for Cost-Sharing the Fiscal Year, F I twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six Water Forum Successor Effort and Habitat Management Element Budget of the Water Forum This agreement is made and entered into on July first, twenty twenty-five, by an among Eldorado Irrigation District, Placer County Water Agency, City of Folsom, Minus Ashland, City of Roseville, San Juan Water District, Citrus Heights Water District, Fair Oaks Water District, Carmichael Water District, Sacramento Suburban Water District, Golden State Water Company, California American Water, Sacramento County Water Agency, Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and the City of Sacramento, on behalf of the Water Forum. Recitals A: The parties to this interagency agreement, collectively parties and individually party, acknowledge that the Water Forum two point zero agreement is not yet signed and a final cost allocation formula has not been agreed upon. B Entering into this interagency agreement for F I twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six does not imply that the parties have agreed to this cost allocation formula on a permanent basis or have approved the entirety of the Water Forum two point zero agreement. C The parties are optimistic that the Water Forum two point zero agreement will be signed in the summer of twenty twenty-five, but will not assume any obligations pursuant to the Water Forum two point zero agreement until it is final. Therefore, the parties, in consideration of the mutual obligations set forth herein, agree as follows: Section I Water Forum Successor Effort Cost Sharing: The parties identified below have each agreed to pay a pro-rata amount of the total costs for funding the Water Forum Successor Effort, W F S E, activities, based upon their number of active water connections and the five-year average quantities of groundwater production in American River diversions, or a negotiated amount, as set forth below. For the period of July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. W F S E, Fund Seven Thousand One Hundred and Three Cost Sharing Partners Eldorado Irrigation District Placer County Water Agency City of Folsom, Minus Ashland, City of Roseville San Juan Water District Citrus Heights Water District F I twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six Cost Share Amounts Sixty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-four fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four sixty-two thousand and fifty-four one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and thirty-eight fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-four forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven Page One of eighteen W F S E, Fund Seven Thousand One Hundred and Three Cost Sharing Partners Fair Oaks Water District Carmichael Water District City of Sacramento Sacramento Suburban Water District Golden State Water Company California American Water Sacramento County Water Agency East Bay Municipal Utility District Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Sacramento Municipal Utility District Eldorado Water Agency Total: F I twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six Cost Share Amounts Thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five two hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-two ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two thirty-two thousand and ten ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixteen eighty-three thousand three hundred and eleven fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-six twenty thousand twenty-one thousand fifteen thousand one million fifty thousand five hundred and nineteen Habitat Management Element Cost Sharing: The parties identified below have each agreed to pay a pro-rata amount of the total costs for funding the Habitat Management Element, H M E, activities, based upon their number of active water connections and the five-year average quantities of groundwater production in American River diversions, or a negotiated amount, as set forth below for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five
Date Print name Environmental Utilities Director attest By
Single Agreement: This interagency agreement may be signed in multiple counterparts, which together will constitute a single interagency agreement. This agreement is executed as follows: Page thirteen of eighteen Sacramento Suburban Water District by [ underscore 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 Date [ underscore 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 Single Agreement: This interagency agreement may be signed in multiple counterparts, which together will constitute a single interagency agreement. This agreement is executed as follows: Page fourteen of eighteen Golden State Water District by [ underscore 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 Date [ underscore 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 Single Agreement: This interagency agreement may be signed in multiple counterparts, which together will constitute a single interagency agreement. This agreement is executed as follows: Page fifteen of eighteen California American Water by [ underscore 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 Date [ underscore 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 Page sixteen of eighteen Single Agreement: This interagency agreement may be signed in multiple counterparts, which together will constitute a single interagency agreement. This interagency agreement is executed as follows: Sacramento County Water Agency, an agency created pursuant to the Sacramento County Water Agency Act by [ underscore 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 Date [ underscore 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 Print Name: Director Department of Water Resources Page seventeen of eighteen Single Agreement: This interagency agreement may be signed in multiple counterparts, which together will constitute a single interagency agreement. This agreement is executed as follows: Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency by [ underscore 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 Date [ underscore 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 Page eighteen of eighteen Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date: May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five Agenda Section: New Business Subject: Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-six A Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for funding through the Safe Streets for All Grant Program administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation from Public Works Department Recommendation slash City. Council Action: The Public Works Department recommends that the city council pass and adopt Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-six A Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for funding through the Safe Streets for All Grant Program administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation. Background slash Issue: The Safe Streets for All (SS4A) Grant Program is a federal initiative created under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, to support local communities in efforts to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries. The program provides funding for both planning and demonstration grants, as well as implementation grants for safety projects aligned with a comprehensive safety action plan. The SS4A program advances the national goal of achieving Vision Zero, the elimination of traffic-related deaths and serious injuries through investment in infrastructure, behavioral, and systemic safety improvements. Eligible activities include developing or updating safety action plans and implementing infrastructure and operational safety improvements on public roadways. One applying for an SS4A grant positions the city of Folsom to pursue federal funding for projects and initiatives aimed at enhancing roadway safety for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motorists. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-five funding cycle, the U.S. Department of Transportation (USDOT) has allocated approximately one point two six billion dollar nationwide for the SS4A program. California agencies are expected to receive a significant share of these funds based on the state's size, population, and demonstrated need for safety improvements. Grant awards for implementation projects typically range from two million dollars to twenty-five million dollars per applicant. The SS4A program requires a minimum twenty percent non-federal match from applicants, which can be met through local funds, in-kind contributions, or certain other eligible sources. Policy slash Rule: These potential projects align with the city's general plan mobility element, including: Policy M four point one point three Prioritize Smart Technologies and Innovative Solutions That Maximize Efficiencies and Safety. Policy M four point one point four Enhance Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Through Infrastructure Improvements. Analysis: At this time, the city intends to apply for funding that may be used for either the development or update of a comprehensive safety action plan or for implementation of eligible safety improvement projects. According to the SS4A Grant Program Guidelines, eligible projects for implementation grants typically focus on infrastructure, operational, and behavioral interventions aimed at eliminating roadway fatalities and serious injuries. Project categories encouraged under the program include: Improved pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, such as sidewalk gap closures, curb extensions, high-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian refuge islands, and protected bicycle lanes. Traffic calming measures that reduce vehicle speeds and improve safety for vulnerable road users, including road diets, raised intersections, and neighborhood traffic management features. Intersection safety improvements, such as roundabouts, protected left-turn phases, signal upgrades including leading pedestrian intervals, and improved sight distance. Enhancements to promote safe speeds, including automated speed enforcement technology, where authorized, speed feedback signage, and corridor-wide speed management strategies. Two Safe Routes to School improvements, focusing on improved pedestrian and bicycle access to educational facilities. Improvements to Transit Access and Safety, including better pedestrian infrastructure around transit stops and integration of transit priority features into roadway designs. Lighting improvements for pedestrian crossings and corridors with nighttime crash histories. Systemic Safety Analysis Projects, involving data-driven identification of high-risk locations and proactive interventions even where crash histories are lower. City staff evaluated candidate projects using the city's Local Roadway Safety Plan (LRSP), Capital Improvement Program (CIP), and Active Transportation Plan (ADP), to identify projects that best align with the SS4A Grant Program's focus areas. Priority was given to projects that directly address known crash patterns, improve safety for vulnerable road users, and support systemic safety improvements. Following this evaluation, staff recommends the following four projects for council consideration as candidates for the SS4A application: One Natoma Street Pedestrian Improvements and Complete Streets Project. The project will enhance pedestrian infrastructure along Natoma Street from Folsom Boulevard to Fargo Way through sidewalk gap closures, curb extensions, upgraded crossings, and ADA improvements to promote safer walking conditions. The project will also upgrade bicycle facilities by adding buffered bike lanes between Fargo Way and Stafford Street and improving existing bike lanes between Folsom Boulevard and Stafford Street to enhance cyclist safety and connectivity. This project was identified as a priority project in the city's Active Transportation Plan. Two Riley Street Roundabout Project: Construction of modern roundabouts on Riley Street between East Bidwell Street and Wales Drive to replace existing signalized intersections and access driveways, improving traffic safety, reducing collision severity, and calming vehicular speeds. Three East Bidwell Complete Streets Project: Implementation of complete streets elements along East Bidwell Street to improve safety and accessibility for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users, including separated bike lanes, enhanced crosswalks, and roadway reconfiguration for traffic calming. This project is identified in the city's Local Road Safety Plan and the Central Business District Vision Plan. Four Prairie City Road Realignment and Safety Improvement Project: Realignment and widening of a substandard segment along Prairie City Road from US five zero to Alder Creek Parkway to remove sharp curves, reduce collision potential, enhance overall corridor safety for all travel modes, and fit the needs of the growing development area. This project is identified in the city's general plan and the city's Local Road Safety Plan. Three Financial Impact: There is no additional financial impact associated with submitting the grant application. Grant Application Assistance by Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., is accommodated by the scope and fee from the city council-approved twenty twenty-four Local Roadway Safety Plan (LRSP) project and will be accommodated within the department's existing annual operating budget. If awarded, the SS4A grant would require a minimum local match of twenty percent of the total project or planning cost. The exact match requirement and funding amounts will depend on the final application scope and award conditions. The local match would be determined through eligible local funding sources and brought back to council at a future date for acceptance of the grant and approval of the award. Environmental Review Submission of a Grant Application is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act (CEQA) and does not require environmental review. Should the city be awarded funding, any projects resulting from the grant would undergo appropriate environmental review prior to implementation. Attachment Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-six A Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for funding through the Safe Streets for All Grant Program administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation submitted: [ underscore 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 Marcus Yasutaki, Acting Public Works Director for Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-six A Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for funding through the Safe Streets for All Grant Program administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation whereas the Safe Streets for All (SS4A) Grant Program was established under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, to support local communities in their efforts to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries, and whereas, the SS4A program provides funding for the development or updating of comprehensive safety action plans, as well as for the implementation of infrastructure and operational safety improvement projects, and whereas, the city of Folsom Public Works Department has identified priority roadway safety projects through its Local Roadway Safety Plan (LRSP), Capital Improvement Program (CIP), and Active Transportation Plan (ADP), and whereas, city staff has evaluated and identified several candidate projects that align with the SS4A program. Goals: And whereas, a local funding match of at least twenty percent, twenty percent, of the total project cost is required if grant funds are awarded, which would be met through eligible local funding sources to be identified upon award. Now, therefore, BIT resolved that the city council of the city of Folsom hereby authorizes the city manager to submit an application for funding through the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All (SS4A) Grant Program, to pursue federal funding opportunities to enhance roadway safety for all users in the city of Folsom. Passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain, Council Member, S Council Member, S Council Member, S Council Member, S underscore 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 Sarah Aquino, Mayor Attest [ underscore 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 Krista Fremantle, City Clerk Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-six Page one of one Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date: May twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five Agenda Section: New Business Subject: Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-two A Resolution authorizing the city manager to hire an arborist to support citywide tree protection and planting services and authorizing the appropriation of funds from the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). From Community Development Department Recommendation slash City Council Action: The Community Development Department recommends the city council adopt Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-two A Resolution authorizing the city manager to hire an arborist to support citywide tree protection and planting services and authorizing they appropriation of funds from the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). Background slash Issue: Trees provide an essential contribution to the general welfare, economic vitality, and overall beauty and character of Folsom. In nineteen ninety-five, the city council adopted a Tree Preservation Ordinance (Folsom Municipal Code Chapter twelve point one six), primarily to establish and maintain tree cover and to promote conservation of tree resources. In the thirty years since that time, there have been a few amendments to the Tree Preservation Ordinance, establishment of a Tree Planting and Replacement Fund, and updates to the mitigation fees reinforcing the significance of trees in Folsom. The city currently has one full-time arborist, urban forester, Amy Nunez, who is responsible for implementation of the Tree Preservation Ordinance and management of the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund, along with related responsibilities listed below. Plan Review, Inspections, and Permit Issuance for All Community Development Divisions: Planning, Development Engineering, Building, Housing, and Code Enforcement; Plan Review, Inspections, and Permit Issuance for Other City Departments; Parks and Recreation; Environmental Water Resources; and Public Works, involving protected trees throughout the city; One Landscape Plan and Irrigation Review for Compliance with Local Standards and State-Mandated Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance (MOLO); Including Reporting for New Landscapes and Significant Renovations to Landscapes for All Land Use Types Participation; Review slash Advice Permit and Inspect All Capital Improvement Projects and Special Projects Involving Protected Trees Participation in All Code Enforcement and Public Safety Concerns and Cases Involving Protected Trees Program Management of the Sacramento Tree Foundation Contract for Plantings, Community Events, and Neighborhoods Programs Program Management of the Cities. Landmark Tree Program: Program Management of the City's Vegetation Management with Local Utility Companies, including issuance of annual permits and review slash inspection of individual requests. For the last five years, the workload associated with listed responsibilities far exceeds the capacity of one full-time urban forester. Even with supplemental contract support, the city is now facing many challenges with the current arborist staffing limitations. Plan Review Target Timelines are not being met expedited plan review cannot be offered due to capacity limitations process modifications have been implemented to accommodate capacity limitations there is limited availability for public inquiries and concerns general plan and tree preservation ordinance implementation is limited temporary contract staff work is limited due to credential requirements slash expertise given ongoing and foreseeable demands for Folsom arborist services. Community Development is recommending a new second full-time arborist position paid in full as a qualifying expense of the city's Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). The estimated cost for this position for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six is one hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars for salary and benefits which would replace the annual part-time contract staffing costs of approximately fifty thousand dollars for tree permit and inspection work. If approved, the annual cost for the additional arborist position will be fully budgeted for in the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). Policy slash Rule pursuant to Folsom Municipal Code three point zero two point zero three zero Section C: The budget shall establish the number of authorized positions to be filled by employees. Pursuant to Folsom Municipal Code three point zero two point zero three zero Section H, the city council may make supplemental appropriations during the course of the fiscal year provided that the city manager certifies that monies are available. All such supplemental appropriations shall be made for the fiscal year by resolution, up to the amount of any excess money certified by the city manager as being available. Analysis: As described in the background section of this report, the responsibilities for city arborist services far exceed the capacity of our single full-time urban forester. Over the last five years, community development has implemented a range of contract solutions including hourly on-call contract arborist services, contract with Sacramento Tree Foundation for new mitigation planting projects, two and reforesting work in existing neighborhoods, and even a part-time contract arborist, retired annuitant, to address high volumes of tree permit and inspection demand. In twenty twenty-four, the city's urban forester workload included: Ninety-three plan reviews on building permits, sixty-three plan reviews for design review and civil improvement plans, nine irrigation and landscape review projects, three hundred and forty-nine tree work or removal permits, and five street tree planting permits, five hundred and seventeen inspections for building permits involving trees or landscape and irrigation, fifty-eight code enforcement cases for tree violations management of the SAC Tree Foundation Program and plantings contract and work management of the landmark tree program with two new landmark groves, including management of survey contract for one of the groves, as well as maintenance for other landmark trees throughout the city work with utilities on annual vegetation management plans and individual permits throughout the city review of capital improvement projects and special projects involving significant tree work, e.g., Phase Two water line for the Folsom Plan area, regional transit double tracking, and EWR sewer capacity work. Along Folsom Boulevard, this workload is unsustainable for our single urban forester and the supplemental contract services we have are simply not sufficient in breadth or depth. Additionally, the retired annuitant currently in the part-time temporary arborist position is relocating out of the area in June so an alternative staffing solution is critical to avoid additional backlog slash delay for all types of development permits involving arborist services. Even with current supplemental resources, arborist service challenges are as follows: Plan Review Target Deadlines are not being met because of the constant volume of work with high development activities, capital projects, and assistance for other departments no expedited plan review available due to capacity limitations for arborist services limited availability for public inquiries and concerns limited availability for implementation on general plan policies, adopted tree, preservation ordinance, or other city council initiatives there are plan check, permit, and inspection fees in place for most arborist services and those fees have been updated recently for full cost recovery. The table below provides a summary of the plan check, permit, and inspection fees collected through the city's ETRKIT-COMDEV system over the last three-year period. The current fiscal year number reflects revenue collected through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Three In addition to the plan check, permit, and inspection fees for arborist services, there are also tree mitigation fees collected for qualifying tree work and removal of protected trees. These mitigation fees are paid into the city's Tree Planting and Replacement Fund to be used for qualifying expenditures. As outlined in Folsom Municipal Code Section one two point one six point one six zero, the fund may be used for tree planting and revegetation projects such as parkways, parks, planting of trees along public trails and beautification projects, to purchase property for tree mitigation sites, or beautification projects, for the retention of a city arborist, or for the development, staffing, or implementation of an urban forestry program. The table below shows the annual mitigation fees paid into the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund over the past five-year period, along with annual expenses, and fund balance. The current Tree Planting and Replacement Fund balance is one million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and two dollars. Annual expenses for the tree fund over the last five years were primarily for tree planting projects contracted with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, along with minor irrigation connection improvement contracts with existing landscape contractors. Prior to that time, expenses to the fund included on-call contract arborist services and expenses for planting projects associated with other city projects as part of separate contracts. The Community Development Department is now recommending we fund an additional permanent arborist position to assist the urban forester in managing the city's arborist services budgeted for in the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). Four Financial Impact: If the city council approves the addition of a new arborist position, the projected cost for salary and benefits starting for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six would total one hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars with annual increases, merit and inflation, in subsequent years to be funded through the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). If the city council approves the addition of the position these amounts will be included in the proposed budgets for those respective fiscal years and presented to the city council for adoption as part of the city's annual budget process. Environmental Review: This action is not a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act (CEQA) and is therefore not subject to environmental review. Attachments One: Resolution Number eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-two A Resolution authorizing the city manager to hire an arborist to support citywide tree protection and planting services and authorizing the appropriation of funds from the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226). Submitted: Pam Johns, Community Development Director Five Resolution No. Eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-two A Resolution authorizing the city manager to hire an arborist to support citywide tree protection and planting services and authorizing the appropriation of funds from the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226) whereas trees provide an essential contribution to the general welfare, economic vitality, and overall beauty and character of Folsom, and whereas, the city council adopted a Tree Preservation Ordinance (Folsom Municipal Code Chapter twelve point one six) in nineteen ninety-five primarily to establish and maintain tree cover and to promote conservation of tree resources, and whereas, the city council established a Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226), Folsom Municipal Code Chapter twelve point one six, that may be used for tree planting and revegetation projects such as parkways, parks, planting of trees along public trails and beautification projects, to purchase property for tree mitigation sites, or beautification projects, for the retention of a city arborist, or for the development, staffing, or implementation of an urban forestry program, and whereas, the city currently has one arborist, urban forester, responsible for a wide range of services associated with implementing the Tree Preservation Ordinance and management of the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund, and whereas, the demand for arborist services far exceeds limited staff capacity given consistently high levels of development activity, new construction and renovations, capital projects, and city council initiatives involving arborist services, and whereas, to address this need, staff proposes the addition of a new second arborist position to assist the urban forester implement the Tree Preservation Ordinance and Tree Planting projects, and whereas, funding for the arborist position will be budgeted for in the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226) within projected cost of one hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars for salary and benefits in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six with annual increases, merit and inflation, in subsequent fiscal years, and now. Therefore, BIT resolved that the city council of the city of Folsom authorizes the city manager to add one arborist position to the Community Development Department budget in the Tree Planting and Replacement Fund (FUND 226) to hire an arborist to assist the urban forester with implementation of the Tree Preservation Ordinance and planting projects. Passed and adopted this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent